June 18th, 2019. Row call, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Tralca?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here. Would you please join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item on agenda received, proposed, or amended.
I'll move.
Second. Any questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll be comments. Anybody like to speak to the board this time is not an agenda item. Okay, I don't see anybody. Claims and payments, resolution A.
The amount of claims for the county this week is $478,953.93.
Okay, any questions on the claims?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Row call.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Do you have any further country view?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to presentation, this is legislative update presented by Gary Grant. Or is that Cary Grant?
That is good-looking or rich, so.
We'll go with Gary.
Yeah. The document I'll be referring to today, I think Larry's already given you a copy and an electronic copy, so if anybody has any questions about that, I just want to go over a couple of items about how this is laid out and why some of these documents that you're seeing are in here. The, there's a copy of the legislative priorities and then the next few items are several sort of of the major bills that we were following for the county or for the Urban County Coalition. Then the bill tracking tab J is essentially a listing of all of the bills that the Urban County Coalition was declared on. Now, for some of these, for some of you that may not have been involved in the legislative process before, whenever a lobbyist communicates with a client on a bill, we generally err on the side of caution and declare at a minimum undecided. So we don't declare for or against a bill until we, unless it's one of our declared priorities or unless we get the unanimous declaration from the Urban County Coalition. So a lot of these bills on here that you see that'll be you, we were simply monitoring and because we sent them to you and communicated with you, we're kind of obligated to declare on it, just FYI. So let me dive right into the, to the summary and some of the issues. Please feel free, if you have any questions, comments, just stop me. I'm going to move through some of these fairly quickly. I know you guys have had a chance to read this, but I'd want to give you guys a chance to do, to ask any questions that you might have. Property tax bill, Senate file 634. Just briefly, this includes, this was a much better bill at the end. It's not, I'm not saying it's a good bill, but it was much better at the end than we started with at the beginning. In the beginning, there was a hard cap of 2% and that if you wanted to raise sort of your levies beyond that, you would have triggered a possibility for a reverse referendum. What, where we ended up was what we call a 2% soft cap. So if you go above that 2%, it has to be by a super majority of the board and there, it doesn't trigger a reverse referendum. Now, one of the things in here that we're not exactly sure how, and I'm not sure that anybody's yet exactly sure how this is going to work, is you're allowed to go above 2% by a super majority, but your revenue will, or your levies will automatically adjust. And by that, I mean if your levy is, let's say for the sake of argument, $10 and that generates $1,000 worth of revenue for the county and your assessments go up to $1,100 and instead of that, you capturing that sort of new growth, your levy will automatically reset, so at the new adjustment, you're still only collecting that $1,000 worth of revenue. So that's the way that I understand it and honestly, I haven't, not entirely sure how that's going to work. Constitutionally, you folks have the authority to set your levies, so I'm not sure who at the state is going to be sort of making that calculation and resetting that levy. I don't know that that's, my guess is that the Department of Management, the people that sort of certify local budgets, will be doing that. But again, like I said, I don't know that, I'm not really sure that anybody knows how that's going to work yet. The additional thing that this bill does is it gives an extra 15 days to cert, or 16 days to certify. So instead of certifying on March 31st, local budgets will now be certified on March 31st. Because, and the reason for that is that if you go above 102%, you'll be required to hold an extra public hearing and do an extra publication, which is extra money, something that we have, we have sort of tried to remedy for the last couple of legislatures, or last several legislative sessions, that reducing some of those burdens. But does anybody have any questions on the property tax bill or comments? Right. Mental health funding. This was, this is a little bit of a misnomer. This doesn't actually put any additional money into mental health. What this bill did, one of the priorities of the Urban County Coalition was under Senate file 504, passed, I think, two years ago, there was a requirement that regions spend down any reserve funds to 20%. And that number was, frankly, an arbitrary figure that the legislature sort of came up with. We did a couple of things in this bill. We increased, we were able to help increase that to 40%. So now, mental health regions can maintain a 40% fund balance. We also maintained something in this bill that was in Senate file 504 and that in those reserve funds, you don't have to count obligated or encumbered funds toward that, toward that particular, toward the 40%. So if you, if you have predictable expenses or a lot of, or some regions I know that are obligating or encumbering funds for access centers, which was a new requirement in House file 2456 last year, those funds don't have to be counted toward the 40%. Any questions on mental health funding? The last comment I'll make on mental health funding is an Urban County Coalition priority has been to develop a stable and sustainable funding source for mental health programs. In the past, for those of you that may be a little new to this, our solution was not a perfect one. It was allow, it was raising the statewide levy cap to 4728 and allowing regions sort of levy within their region the amount that they deem necessary to provide the services, the necessary services. The problem with that has been over the last couple of legislative sessions, and this will lead into the children's mental health bill, is that with the state constantly, or seemingly constantly adding new requirements for mental health regions, putting this entirely on the burden of property taxes is no longer tenable. I don't think. If the state's going to continue to add responsibilities, it's going to have to be a partner. And that was one of our messages this year, is that we believe that this is going to have to at some point be a mix of local property taxes and some state contributions. Now, I will tell you that there are several proposals sort of floating around at the legislature. I don't know that at this point, there's, that they have, they being the legislature, have set on any one particular one. I know that there's talk of some sales tax revenue. Should a penny sales tax pass? The other one we heard about the end of last year, that the Senate, I think, will be taking a look at, is rolling back the backfill and using that money to fund either whole or in part sort of the children and the adult mental health systems. Now, that's, I think that's the very definition of robbing Peter to pay Paul. But on the other hand, I think we should really be cautious about buyouts of the systems rather than buy downs, because as we have seen in the past, this legislature can't bind a future legislature to any course of action. So five years from now, or three years from now, you know, if we're doing a bang-up job for 150 million, we could probably do an even better job for 130 million. Or the legislature sort of, I can picture in tough times, the legislature rolling back whatever appropriations they were to make. So I think rather than a buyout, I think a buy down probably makes a little more sense that allows local supervisors and regional governance boards to make available funds to sustain the programs that are necessary. So is there any questions on mental health funding?
I don't have questions, but I just have a comment on it that, and I know that we're nowhere near this in the state of Iowa right now, but a number of other states have gotten there. I just saw that Colorado has reached a billion dollars in revenue from the legalization and taxation of marijuana in the state. And that's been our new revenue source that's been talked about in the state. And I think it's something we need to keep talking about. I know that we're nowhere near that in Iowa with the current legislature or even with the new legislature probably, but there are revenue sources out there that would also ease the property tax burden in this community as well.
Right. They're having, and as you all know, the governor vetoed the expansion of the medical cannabis program. I think that was, that was less of a philosoph, it's my understanding that was less of a philosophical decision on whether or not that was the right thing to do and more of a mechanical decision that there were some, there might have been some bad information that drove the legislature to codify a recommendation that was not what the board actually recommended. So I think that one was, I'm not defending anybody's position, but I'm just telling you, I think what we've heard, that there was some, that was less a philosophical decision on whether or not that was an appropriate amount and more of a, the board itself didn't believe that was an appropriate amount. So, so yeah, and to be fair, I don't know if that discussion will happen anytime soon, although I can tell you that there are, there are members of the Urban County Coalition, specifically Scott and Dubuque, that are facing a rather interesting challenge with the neighboring state of, just, the governor just signed the legalization of recreational cannabis in Illinois. They're going to be facing some really interesting challenges, sort of being a stone's throw from where it's legal. So. Children's mental health, this House file 690. This was actually a very good bill and I think that we, we as an Urban County Coalition supported it because it does make an incredible amount of sense to have an organization providing the spectrum of mental health care to Iowans who are in need of mental health care. One of the things that we do know is that some of the conditions, if you treat them early, they become less expensive and less onerous to treat sort of as time goes on. So regions now will be tasked with providing an array of children's mental health services. We'll have core services that are outlined in the bill. The bad part about it is there's no money in this bill. So regions, while they are, regions are tasked literally with not only providing these services, but creating the infrastructure that will provide them. Because currently, as I know you are all aware, there is really no children's mental health system in Iowa. It's kind of a mishmash of services. Now, one of the things that we have, because we, in the Urban County Coalition, there are, is comprised of representatives from three mental health regions that represent about two-thirds of the population of Iowa. And what we have recommended to coalition members is that in the, there's a report due in December that outlines sort of what the system in your region will look like, that the first line of that report should be subject to available funding. And we're not trying to be sort of flip when we say that. We know that there are regions now that will be very soon struggling with providing the adult mental health services that they're tasked with, let alone a variety of new services. So while this was a good bill, it was a probably a needed step forward. And I don't know that anybody disagrees with the premise of, again, we run into the difficulty of funding. How are we going to pay for this? And it's becoming even more of a crisis, I think, for counties than even the legislature knows because we, and one of the things that we've tried to sort of convey to them is that in the absence of sort of reliable funding, if some of these services can't be provided, the counties are going to end up providing them anyway through our jails. So we, we know that in the absence of some of these treatment programs, you're going to be paying to house and for the medication for some of these folks anyway because they will end up in the criminal justice system. So we will continue to communicate this. The legislature right now doesn't seem to feel sort of a sense of urgency because there are, the quote is, we hear, "All this money laying around in regional reserve funds." Well, there are some regions that have rather large reserve funds. They have been reluctant to spend those down, creating new programs, simply because, as you all know and as the legislature continually reminds us, that they will not spend one-time money on ongoing resources. So, which I think is a very sound budgeting principle. So we remind the legislature that reserve funds are one-time monies and spending those to create ongoing programs is probably not the most fiscally sound solution either. So it's sort of a catch-22. I know that there are regions that are spending those down on access centers. They're obligating monies for some future expansion of the core, the core plus services, but we seem to be in a stalemate right now with the legislature. And as long as they don't feel it's, it's an urgent problem, they probably won't address it because it will require some hard choices from them. It will, to buy out the system, it would probably, we know that, I think it would cost about 125 million, which is what, ballpark is what's spent statewide now by regions. If you include all of the funds being spent in the, from the reserve funds and the money that's levied. We honestly don't know what a mental health, what a children's mental health system will, will cost to create. So 152 million, you know, if you take, that's the, that's the number that's, that the state provides in backfill funds. We don't know how, if or for how long that would fund both systems. So we're, we'll continually sort of monitor the legislative temperature on this, but right now, I can tell you last session, they didn't feel an obligation or any sense of urgency. Any questions on the children's mental health bill? Department of Human Services budget, I won't go through these, but these are just some line items that were of interest to some of the members of the Urban County Coalition. So we scoured this budget, pulled out some of these, some of the figures. County compensation boards, this is an issue that's, that, that, I'll tell you that, that some of the folks wonder why Urban, why we formed the Urban County Coalition. This is kind of one of those issues where we differ a little bit from ISAC. And ISAC is a good organization. I'm not bad-mouthing them. They do a fantastic job. We, we work with them on as many issues as we can, but it's issues like the county compensation boards where we, where we sometimes differ. And there's another one on here. I'll talk about the next one. This one, we were able to sort of help kill in a, in a committee that would have changed the makeup of the compensation board and included township trustee board members, city council located in the county, which, the, these are, these are, these are folks, you know. If we had our brothers, I think most of our members would prefer to see these go away and to have supervisors sort of being kind of in charge of their own fates. Where we cross swords a little bit with ISAC is that ISAC has affiliates, like county auditors, county attorneys, county sheriffs, you know, all of whom, not all of whom, but many of whom are understandably sort of skittish about putting their fate in the hands of county supervisors. So, you know, if they, some of them have better relationships with their supervisors than others. So this is one that will probably rear its ugly head again next session. I think it's still eligible for consideration, but, because nothing ever truly dies until the end of a session, and a session is normally two years on an election cycle. So until the end of this next session, nothing from last year is truly dead. Any question on compensation boards? Prisoner medical expenses, this is a, this is something that we have historically differed with ISAC and the Sheriff's Association on. The case law is not very clear. There are some differences in the definitions of custody and different counties sometimes handle these expenses in different ways. What we have historically opposed is codifying a responsibility for a county that does not currently exist. So the proposal two years ago was to add the county as the payer of last resort. For those of you that were here, remember that. And we did oppose that because right now, it's not clear that the county is the payer of last resort for medical expenses incurred prior to that, that person being taken into custody. So we all know that once the prisoner, once the person is sort of, is booked into a county jail, then the medical expenses for that, for that inmate do fall on the county. What we're not looking to do is to expand that responsibility. If you choose to pay some of those, and I know some counties do, costs incurred prior to when somebody's taken into custody, that's a decision or a policy that you can make, we're just not interested in putting that in code. So I know that also chiefs of police weighed in on this as well because I think they are also not looking to expand what they may or may not be responsible for. I mean, I think that there's some, some, and I'm not an attorney, so forgive me, so that there's some gray areas. I know that some folks in some circumstances, and chief, you can probably tell better than I can, that folks aren't, they may be not taken into custody simply because a department doesn't want to incur a medical expense and that, I'm assuming that is folks involved in an accident where a crime may have also occurred. So any questions on prisoner medical expenses? Land acquisition, this is one of the other areas where we ended up in a much, I won't say a better place, but a much more palatable place than we started. Originally, this bill would have eliminated the conservation tax credit. It would have not allowed a private individual to donate land to a municipal entity unless they also donated 10 years' worth of maintenance fees. And it, it no longer allowed the Natural Heritage, the Natural Heritage Foundation or the, to utilize a low-interest revolving loan fund to purchase land. Now, we were able to work with the authors of this bill and get everything struck from that except for the provision where the Natural Heritage Foundation can no longer use. And it's, the fund is a non-point source fund for land acquisition that was established, I think, about 10 years ago. And then I think about 2007, no, 2000, established in, I think, 2007. And I think 2008 or 9, the legislature allowed this private nonprofit to utilize this to purchase land. And I know that's common with some county conservation departments that the Natural Heritage Foundation would purchase a piece of land at an auction and then sell it to, like a county conservation department. So that will, that will no longer be allowed. But we were able to get struck out all of the other provisions. So now, if someone wants to donate your land, their land to you, they won't have to donate, you know, they can still take a conservation tax credit and they will no longer have to donate 10 years' worth of maintenance fees. Any questions on land acquisition? Forest reserve tax credit, this, this is another one where I think that ISAC may have trouble weighing in and I'm not saying this is a criticism because there is a difference of opinion with some supervisors in some counties who feel, who are driving this bill, who feel that there are some, there's a significant part of their tax base that they, they say is, is owned by absentee owners who buy, who may buy several, several hundred acres of trees for, and use it as a private hunting preserve or something like that. So there's been an effort to eliminate this or curtail it. We have opposed that effort in the past and will, unless we get further direction from you folks, probably continue to oppose the elimination or curtail of this in the future. Because we do know that this is something that folks in the Urban County Coalition have encouraged the use of in their counties. So, and I think one of, believe it or not, I think one of the largest sort of users of this by value of land is Johnson County. So we have a, I think we have a fairly good argument for, for keeping this as it is because if this were to go away, it would result in a statewide, according to the fiscal note, which I think is low, statewide property tax increase of about $12 million. So in the current climate, anytime that you can, you can tell somebody that their actions will raise property taxes, that usually scares them off of it, so. Transporting excessive weights, raw forest products. This is a bill that I want to thank you and we've thanked all the rest of the Urban County Coalition members for contacting their legislators and boy, I'll tell you, the county, the county engineers, they came out in force. And that's what, that's what this bill would, instead of sort of taking away your authority to do this without any input whatsoever, what, what will happen is now, now there'll be a, a kind of a task force, that's not the right word, but a task force that will include county engineers at the DOT to sort of determine the best way to sort of handle this issue, the permit and the permitting of this. It will most likely now be handled by the state, but now I think this still preserves your ability to embargo certain roads, so, which wasn't, which wasn't present in the, in the initial bill. And the last issue that I want to talk about a little bit is the unfunded mandates. This is something we deal with kind of on a regular basis with the Urban County Coalition and we make some progress some years and we go back other years, unfortunately. And we're constantly reminding legislators the consequence, what we, what we like to call sort of the unintended consequences of their actions. One of the ones this year is, we did get the state government chair, Robbie Smith from Davenport, to appoint one of his colleagues, Senator Canoyer, to lead a group this summer to sort of see if they can find some solutions to at least the, the cost of housing DHS offices. Now, we do realize that county residents, where these offices are located, do get some benefits because the offices are located there. The problem is, is that over the years, as I'm sure some of you may remember, the DHS essentially had a small, at least a small office in every county in the past. Over the years, through consolidation, these have been consolidated, I think, into 15 service centers, most of, most located in the most populous areas. So right now, counties like Blackhawk spend a significant amount of So, right now, counties like Blackhawk spend a significant amount of, amount of money housing DHS offices and providing them office support. And we just don't know that it's sort of tenable for you all to be forced to supplement the state budget by housing a state agency. We understand that there's some benefits, but right now, you're allowed to bill the counties that that office serves for a proportionate amount to the services that they receive. However, the code doesn't actually require the counties to pay that. So, good, we've actually had members try to send out that bill and they get a resounding yeah, just hold your breath waiting for the check. So, so we'll hopefully this summer be working with the Senate State Government Committee members to see if we can at least make a little bit of progress on this issue. So, that concludes kind of my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
You know, I want to first thank you, you guys do a heck of a job keeping the board updated throughout the session with the emails periodically. So, a lot of that information were kept up to date and it's kind of nice, really.
Well, we do kind of flood you guys with information, especially at the beginning, unfortunately. That's when Larry and I try our best to, to filter, not send you everything. But we want, we want to make sure that anything that could impact the way that you do business, you get. And those sort of taper off towards, you know, we get through first funnel and second funnel. But we appreciate that. And if there are any suggestions for any different ways that you folks want to be communicated with us, please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and give us a call.
Yeah, they're real helpful, especially the way you kind of put a priority on the different ones. And so, we thank you for that. Board, is there any other questions? Anybody in the public? Well, again, we thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item five, this is to receive project updates from department ads and/or elected officials. Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. A little update on the gravel roads, they have been improving. We'll see how the weather impacts those this week. Crews have been out working on them as the weather is allowed. Dust controls for this year, we have released the vast majority of those to the dust control contractors. So, residents will be getting their first round applied when those contractors do come into the area to complete that work. Other than that, we are just continuing construction on Raymond Road over three-eighty. And we did complete our marquee road paving up north of Dunkerton last week or so, so.
Ryan, that one I called you on the other day, on Raymond, that project that we did with the city that they were saying the road wasn't put back to original shape and you said you drove it that day?
Yeah, I, I did drive that road, that's, drawing a blank on the name here, just north of Raymond.
Tommy, was it Tommy?
Tommy, yeah.
Tommy, that's who called me, I think it was his mother.
Yeah, I know, we've worked with the utility contractor. The, the project that was done was a water main installation on the south side of the road. The south side of the road in that area is within the city limits of Raymond. It was a project that the city, that the city of Raymond was in charge of. We worked with the contractor just to get that road back in shape. We did receive several rounds of rock from that contractor to help put that road back in better condition. I know last week when I was out driving that site too, there was a seeding erosion control contractor on site doing some reshaping in the ditch as well. So, as for that contractor, we, I mean, the county didn't have a contract with them to complete anything. Again, it wasn't in our right of way. The roadway portion we do maintain, though.
Sure. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing anybody. Move on to item six, minutes approved for eleven June two thousand and nineteen.
Salute.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Item seven is consent agenda with a single resolution.
Salute.
Second.
Any questions on that one? Roll call, please.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item A is reports, this is motion that the recorders report if fees collected. I'm Sandy Allen Smith, county recorder for the period of March first, two thousand and nineteen through April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Being received.
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item nine is a contract and agreements. This is a resolution contracting Blackhawk County and Mac Construction for FY twenty, Gilfordville Maintenance Building. The bid was two hundred and forty-nine thousand, the estimate was two hundred and forty thousand and start date of one July. Ryan, you want to speak to this or?
This is in conjunction with the two other contracts that you approved and signed last week for the electrical and the plumbing portion of that project. Obviously, the goal will be to get started here after July first, first with a completion this fall for winter hits. Thank you.
Anybody else?
And the overage is just going to be covered by the residual from the other contracts?
Yeah, so there was two other contracts, again, for the electrical and the plumbing. Both those were under our estimates. I mean, I think overall, we're, we're within budget for the total project.
How come we don't have any damages?
I talked with the architect about that when we put the project together. It's kind of one of those that, that we can look at. There are some projects we do liquidated damages on, others we don't. Sometimes when we put liquidated damages in a project that could be reflected in the contractor's bids as well. And talking with the architect, it wasn't something that would, that, that they thought was common for this type of project. So, and kind of took their recommendation and left that out for, for this one.
Anybody else? Thank you. Do you have a motion on this?
Not yet.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, the next resolutions coming up are the master collective agreement. I believe we already approved the tentative agreement here a few months past. So, all we're doing here is just simply approving the final signed document, is that correct, Deb? Okay, so, the first one is a resolution approved and direct chair to sign, master collective bargaining for unit one, clerical unit.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
I just want to say that I think we sent a strong message to our employees that no matter what the state legislature does, we believe that they've got a seat at the table and that's why we kept all the permissive language in and that we're going to be committed to that going forward.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item C is a resolution approved, director to sign for master collective agreement. This is unit five, the sheriff's.
Salute.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. And item D is a resolution approved, director chairs sign for master collective agreement with unit six, and this would be the attorneys.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. And this is item A, but I don't think it is. A resolution. That was our last one, wasn't it? We do have one more left, Deb, that's going to come to us.
Unit four.
Unit four? Okay, very good. Okay, the next resolution, consulting services and fees agreement between Blackhawk County and Perspective. Consulting partners be approved and chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Deb, anything on this?
Good morning, Board, Deb Bunker, HR Director. This is just the, the agreement with Perspective. We, you approved them on May seventh, so we were just getting the agreement together. I've had Pete review it. They also got the insurance provided for us.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item B, resolution memorandum of agreement between Blackhawk County and Dubuque County, Johnson County, Lynn County, Scott County, voluntary agreed to jointly develop, communicate, and advocate for issues of mutual interest, General Assembly, Executive Branch, State of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody got any questions or comments on that?
Did you want to say anything or as long as you're here today, I was going to say, or do you have any history? Does anybody need any history on, I know, since you're new to it, but I said, I'd just like to say, I guess I appreciate all the work that you do and, and providing us, since we can't be there physically and, and don't, I don't think any of us would have that time to go down and do what you do for us. So, it's very much appreciated. And as Tom mentioned, I know when he said periodically, I was going to question that because I said, I think they're correct. Where it is flooded, so when you need to, you certainly get that communication out to us, so appreciate that.
Okay, is there anybody else? Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item C, resolution change order number one received from Don Gardner Construction for additional electrical work. This is in the attorney's area, and four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Good morning, Board, Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. This is a change order for additional data lines that we needed to run from this area to our closest switch, which is located in the attorney's office. The original bid from Gardner Construction came in at thirty-seven thousand, ten dollars. This takes it up to thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, of which fifty-five thousand was budgeted for this project, so.
Okay, Board, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item ten A is a resolution, amendment to the minutes, board supervisors meeting on June fourth, two thousand and nineteen to correct the submitted name for the near management plan for Dave Writing House to Dennis Writing House be approved.
So moved.
So moved.
It's just correction of the minutes. Okay, roll call, please.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item B is a request for purchase capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder. It's five desktop computers, one laptop with a docking station, five Elite Book tablets with docking stations, and twenty Microsoft standard upgrades for nineteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, twenty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Kim, anything you need to add to that? It's a budgeted item, right? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item C is a resolution of the road embargo on Waters, Waters Road be lifted, thus restoring vehicle and load limits to the maximum legal limit for the said roadway.
So moved.
Ryan, we're lifting that because...
This is one of the ninety-day embargoes that was put in place earlier this year to just help protect the condition of that seal coat road. In FY twenty, as part of our seal coat project, we do have planned to reseal coat Waters Road as well.
Okay. Board, any other questions? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item D is a resolution, amendment to the minutes of the board of supervisors, meeting June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Read as follows. Be it hereby resolved that the road embargoes on Barnes Ferry Road, Jepson Road, and Miller Creek be lifted.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item E, a resolution, basically what this one is, is the board has taken action, I believe, a month ago for annexation from Cedar Falls, and this is just another step in the process, is that correct, Shane? Actually, what we're doing today is appointing Supervisor Dan Tralka to be appointed as representative for the board. When you have this meeting, it's going to be set by the city of Cedar Falls.
Correct. Good morning, Board, Shanger, I'm with the city of Cedar Falls. Yeah, if you remember back in November, this would have been before Mr. Tralka was on the board. I came before the board, asking the board to approve expanding the city of Cedar Falls' TIF district out into the county, knowing we had an agreement to purchase about two hundred acres of land just outside the city limits. We acquired that property in January and we've been working with seven other residents adjacent to the property we own, and we are now starting the process of, of annexation. City Council for Cedar Falls last night did set the date of public hearing for August nineteenth for the annexation and also set the date of consultation for July second. Now, one of the very first steps that the city has to do is send a notice to the county and also to the Cedar Falls Township trustees, because that's the area that this land is located in, and we have to have a consultation meeting. So, the city council did designate one city council rep and the supervisors generally will designate one rep to attend that consultation meeting. It's basically just for informational purposes.
What's, is the date set already for that?
Yes, July second at four, I think it's four P M.
Okay.
And, and the Cedar Falls City Clerk will be sending out the official notice today in the mail and so you should get it probably in the next day or so.
Remember, Board, I sent a memo out asking whoever, I think, volunteers, really, thank you for that. Okay, Dan, anything?
Nope.
You said it very short, meaning...
Right, we're obligated per state code to hold a consultation meeting. It'll be at Cedar Falls City Hall in one of our conference rooms. Again, it's just for informational purposes if there's any questions. And I did send a map yesterday. I was just forgetting it kind of late, but if y'all have it, you can see what the area that we're looking to annex includes. And it will be a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation. The city is one of the property owners and then there are seven other private residents that, that have submitted their applications. So, it will be a one-hundred percent voluntary request.
Okay.
I would just, I just, with my personal belief that the city of Cedar Falls needs to improve its fire coverage before annexing any more land into the city limits.
Pete, I know you had discussion with Shane on this and with myself and everything looks like it's ready to go.
Oh, yeah, this, this, I don't see any legal problem for this at all.
Very good. Okay, then, is there, is there any other questions? Do you have a motion on this?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, we're to item eleven, any reports or information from the board at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.